Good morning, we're now called to order any items from the public. Hearing none, need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I don't know if I should have probably done this after the items of, of the public, but at the request of Governor Morrissey over the last week and a half or so, uh, there's been requests pushed out all over the state for folks to help with the programs that have been deleted or postponed for right now with the SNAP programs with a lot of our federal neighbors, our workforce of being unemployed or they actually, some are employed, but they're not getting paid. And there's a great need for communities, faith groups, governments to step forward and help with this, uh, with this need. And I know that like, for example, C cap, uh, is a very, very active group and has been in our, or in our community for a very long time. Uh, the backpack program, I know it's a very, very successful program in our school systems. So hopefully I, I would like for us to be able to participate, uh, somehow, uh, in helping our neighbors, uh, in this difficult time of their lives. So I know it's not on the agenda and I apologize for that, uh, right up front, but also know what's right. And, and I don't want to wait another week and get it on the agenda. It's not about a left or a right issue, it's about what's doing right in our community. And that's, that's what I think we should be able to do.
Mr. President, do you think that, um, a monetary donation to one of those organizations or to both would be suffice to help out?
Yes, and that's, that's at the, uh, request of, of the governor, that's the direction that he, you know, wants all of us to be able to, to try and help somewhere.
Mr. President, do you think maybe we could talk about how we did for the floods? We could do like, you know, we did Operation Berkeley County Cares and maybe we could do, we could talk about maybe having some drop off points for people who wanted to donate food that we could give directly to, uh, agencies that disperse that food. So if, you know, someone wanted to use, uh, for saving, we did the last time, our fire halls or our police department as a drop off point for, um, food that could go to the, our local pantries, so we could collect it and then one of us would be responsible for picking it up and getting it to that such pantry, or maybe one of the pantries would pick it up itself. It's just, it's just a thought.
Yeah.
Uh, hey, I'm, I'm open to anything, anything that's good that's going to help people.
Yeah, you know, feeding the hungry and clothing the naked was the first two things that Jesus told us to do, so, um, I, I, I think maybe we could maybe work on with, work with Matt, um, our PR person and maybe get something out to do some type of, yeah, some kind of campaign food drive where people could drop off, uh, non-
Yeah, it works best through the fire companies.
Yeah, non-perishable items to the fire companies, our fire companies are manned, there's people there and, uh,
Especially with the holiday season.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure the city of Martinsburg would probably want their fire department to be involved, they were involved the last time. And we can use our, uh, five assets of our county fire halls to use for, uh, donation and drop off points.
All right, any, uh, any further discussion? I'm, I was kind of looking forward-
I would say let's check with those agencies we mentioned and see if they need any financial assistance and consider it then, but check with them and see what, what they actually need directly.
I kind of have.
You have, okay.
And they, they're, they purchase a lot of their food through the food bank and, and that's, you know, you could, if you make a donation to the Mountaineer Food Bank, you know, for them to be able to purchase food, then it gets dispersed throughout the rest of the state. I, I, I feel if you do it locally, your food will stay locally and they have a stronger need now than ever of being able to replenish their foods and that kind of stuff. So I, I'd like to see, uh, a, a donation of some sorts.
What, what kind of level are you thinking?
You think you're seeing a monetary donation to, um-
Maybe in addition to what the others-
For the collection.
Yeah, yeah, between, uh, between C cap, Lowe's and Fish's-
Backpack.
And the backpack, we, we cover a lot of territory there.
We do.
With, with both of those organizations, you know, you, you get to, you get to children that can take home the food, uh-
It's, it's nothing more than what we've done on some of our outside agencies anyway, but it's in the budget for-
Would this come out, could it come out of coal severance?
Could, and the commission, if you, we could put a purchase order in front of you next week of any value you wanted.
And that would give the, that would give the, uh, food banks the opportunity to kind of buy what they need. Maybe give the purchasing power back to them.
Be better than what you collect.
That might be better than collecting because then it kind of gives the purchasing power back to them and they can, they probably have a much stronger purchasing power and then they know exactly what they need also, so that might be a better route to go.
You donated to them, I mean, you funded them before, so they're vendors of yours, so you want to, we can put a purchase order in front of you next week if we knew the amount you'd like to do. Can, are we in a position where we could do 5,000 each one of those individ- uh, agencies? Yeah, C cap and the backpack version, 5,000 apiece?
Yes. I'd say 10, I'd say 10.
Each?
I think so, that's just me.
What, what about-
It's our coal severance.
Well, let, let's, let's look at it this way, Ms. Cal, what do you think about?
Do five and then say aye.
Now and see where we are a couple of weeks out.
I'm with you.
Yeah, cause the SNAP program may get opened back up, the federal government may open back up, it's going to take a couple of weeks.
There's, there's rumors going on that they're going to get it open here next week, that's, that's what I'm hearing from the stats of-
Well, Mr. President, that would be my motion then to do five and five to those two programs.
I would look at it again and-
Look at it again.
Yeah, more.
I think that's one of- There'll be purchase orders next week.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, there'd be, uh, a total of $10,000 donated, uh, split equally between C cap, Lowe's and Fish's and the Berkeley County Backpack Program. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'd say, thank you all, thank you very much. Uh, purchase order law, any questions for Tracy this week? Hearing none, Mr. Wong, we do have, uh, an internal budget revision, you do have, Mr. President, it's from the sheriff for account 700, which is law enforcement. Um, pardon me, asking for permission to move $2,765 from materials and supplies to his, to 223, which is professional services, and that's the only one. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Uh, change of status, hiring recommendation received from Tim Ziant, Director of Community Corrections, for Samantha Clown as the therapist three with an annual salary of 79,000, that's effective 12/1/25. Changes status received, the Honorable Larry Hess, assessor for Elizabeth Angelo, uh, clerk for a salary increase for additional duties and performances with a salary change of 43,100 to 44,100, that's effective 11/1/25. Letter of retirement received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Terrence Sinhanic, Assistant Chief Court Marshal, uh, effective 12/31/25. Letter of resignation received from Chad Wildbryder, Deputy County Administrator for Mandy Binnell, uh, custodian effective 10/31/25. Uh, request for a $500 stipend has been received from Jennifer Swisher, Emergency Communications Director for Brittany Connors as a result of becoming certified center supervisor, and that's effective 11/15/25. Uh, October 30 meetings, uh, commission meeting minutes, Commissioner Hardy was not present, so can we go ahead and vote on the minutes for October 30? Need a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Abstained due to absence?
Let the record show Commissioner Hardy abstained due to absence. Have a canceled check from the, uh, County Clerk's Finance, uh, Office. Get called up to you all here. Okay, bond reduction for the warranty start for Potomac Station, phase three, TH lots 229 dash 236, that's for grading and final plat, that's BCP file number 2306 dash 200, tied to 2306 dash 199 and 2209 dash 235, that's bond number 100643507. On reduction in, in warranty start Cardinal Point, section three, phase one, lots 186 to 206, 224 to 233, 244 to 254, 267 to 271 and 309 to 325, that's final plat, BCP file number 2401 dash 008, that's tied to 2401 dash 007. Number 2108 dash 319 and 2111 dash 336, that's bond number 100633635. Engineering has made those recommendations. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
They're moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'd say, thank you. Next up, Mr. Hess, our county assessor, good morning, sir.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, this week I have, um, um, like a total of 16 personal property office air exoneration. Uh, for the reasons that's listed there, I have this 16, they total up to $6,120.84.
Okay, need a motion to approve the 16 personal tax exoneration that's presented by the assessor?
They're moved.
They're moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's it.
Good, thank you. The only other thing I have would be a, um, we had to do a split bill for a divorce for, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Sutherland. They had, uh, four vehicles and they also had a mobile home, which is class two, it's a different class three, but, uh, so the total assessed value on the mobile home was $10,638. For the four vehicles, it was a total of $30,930. So we split the bill and Darren's going to get two of the vehicles, uh, with a total assessed value of $16,770. And Paula's going to get the mobile home with a value of $10,638. And two of the other vehicles, uh, with assessed value of $14,160, so I need your approval so we can get that bill split for them.
Okay, need a motion to approve the enforcement of the tax bill for Darren Sutherland and Paula Sutherland, uh, as described by the assessor.
They're moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's how, thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, board meeting reports, Commissioner Boyd.
Did not have any meetings this past week.
Yeah. Commissioner Hardy.
Uh, I had my, uh, standing planning commission meeting this week, uh, it was pretty light agenda and, uh, uh, actually called into the meeting, I wasn't, was feeling a little under the weather, so I was able to call in, which was a nice option to have. But, uh, pretty light agenda, uh, we had a couple of public hearings and, uh, we had, uh, few, uh, final plat determinations and that was it, so that was really the only means I had this week, last week I was loaded, so.
Yeah, you need a little break down.
Yeah.
Not feeling well.
Mr. Whittaker.
I had no meetings.
Yeah, Mr. Cal.
Had two, uh, Tuesday night, we had sewer board meeting, um, ECO Lab and, uh, the Woods Lagoon, uh, projects are, are functioning as hoped. And then, um, the stormwater meeting followed that Tuesday evening and we will discuss that later in the meeting about the stormwater and the new MS4 permit, so. Uh, one other thing I wanted to mention, uh, when the governor was here a few weeks ago and we talked about highway concerns and road projects in Berkeley County, he asked that we get that information to his staff and I, uh, I had followed up on that this week and got, uh, updated my, uh, highway concerns version of what Berkeley County needs and sent that to multiple staff members of the governors, so hopefully they'll look at it direct. I just wanted to let you know that, so.
Well, I think it's important to stay in their ear, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Uh, I think every couple of months we need to, uh, either have those face-to-face meetings or some type of communication with them. Uh, actually, the only meeting that I had this week was with, uh, our, our park meeting on the construction of the Inwood Park. Um, they've discovered a couple of sinkholes, which I think that area is kind of prone to sinkholes, so they're looking at seeing what needs to be done with them. Uh, the water district has asked that there be a, a water line extension be done during this, uh, during this, uh, construction. And, uh, they'll be starting the fencing and, uh, the berm area very shortly to try and get, uh, the area secured, so that, that'd be a good thing. And they're, uh, from a construction point, they're still working on their, uh, storm ponds, uh, which one will be, you know, eventually created into a recreational pond and, uh, so they're still doing some blasting and that kind of stuff in the area, so. Uh, everybody seems to be very happy that's working on a project there and things are moving.
Chris Strovel and I spoke this week about some things and, uh, there's a possibility Senator Capito may be in town next Thursday and maybe would want to meet with us up at the, uh, park site. And of course, she was involved with earmark money that's going towards that project, so.
All right, um, wow. We've got a full house.
Full audience.
I hope you all bought your instruments with you.
Love for y'all to play music for us, so.
Yeah.
I have the privilege of being in the department's parade in front of them, so I got to hear them play at Martin.
Yeah, awesome. Uh, fantastic. Uh, on the board and commission vacancies, have a motion to appoint, uh, Fire Chief Martin Roberts to the, uh, local emergency planning committee. Like to have that motion.
So moved.
Yep.
Second.
Yes, sir, uh, they're properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'd say. See, uh, we have received the reappointment packet, uh, from Susan Crowell for the Historic Landmark Commission, I'd like a motion to get her reappointed.
So moved, Mr. President, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, uh, to reappoint, uh, Susan Crowell to the, uh, Landmarks Commission. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'd say. Reapac- reappointment packet received from John Bushman, uh, for the, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals. John, you have any, are you prepared to make that motion today or you want to wait?
Um-
It kind of comes under planning.
Yeah, um, I'm-
We can do it next week, it's, it's no rush.
I mean, no- nothing derogatory in there, just, I just kind of caught off guard, so we'll take a look at it, yeah.
Uh, reappointment packet received from Craig Potter for Berkeley Senior Services Board.
Yes, and, uh, Craig Potter, uh, is the treasurer and he's not just entitled only, but he really works hard at this and does a great job and I would like to make a motion to reappoint Craig for another term on the Berkeley Senior Service Board.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh, to reappoint Craig Potter to the Berkeley Senior Services Board and further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd say. And next up is our honorary commissioner, Nalani Castillon. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for being here, I'm going to have you come up here and stand in front of the flag and we're going to get you all sworn in and make it all official. That way you can get your paycheck for the day. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I know, I'm invested.
Do swear or affirm-
Do you swear or affirm?
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia. That I will work hard to fulfill my responsibilities- Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner- To which I have been appointed. So help me God. Thank you. Thank you for coming today, thank you for being a part of it, if you want to tell us a little bit about yourself, where you go to school, your hopes and dreams and, and what you want to do when you grow up, we'd love to hear about it.
My name is Nalani Castillon, I am a current senior at Faith Christian Academy. Um, currently my plans are to get a PhD in astrophysics, those are my aspirations. I am unsure of where I want to go to for college, but I am considering WVU as it has many research opportunities there, but, um,
That's awesome, that's awesome, yeah, both my girls went to WVU and both have, yeah, master's degrees from there, so it is a wonderful institution and has a lot to offer, so. But, uh, well, thank you again for being here today, we appreciate you and you, if you have anything you'd like to chime in during our discussion today, feel free to just pop right in there, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go Falcons. You do quite the crowd today.
Yeah, these Apple men might beat you up. Next up is Will Lawrence, our fiduciary supervisor. Good morning, sir.
That'd be proverbial bone to pick with whoever schedules these things. Now all these young people get to learn about the fabulous world of probate. Uh, this morning we have 30 estates for final or interim settlement for the month of November 2025. All estates proposed for settlement here this morning are identical to those found in your read ahead. Additionally, all estates proposed for settlements, uh, have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objections to date from any interested parties of these estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves or estates, uh, have been declared to be insolvent, meaning no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries and creditors alike. Without objection from any of these significant interested parties present, uh, here in the audience today, I ask this commission's consideration for the approval of the 30 estates for final or interim settlement in the month of November 2025.
Okay, motion to approve the, uh, 30 estates account for the month of November.
So moved.
Second.
They're properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Will. Thanks, Will, you made it easy this week.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. You going to hang around for your mother?
If I have a seat.
Yeah. There you go, thank you.
That's all I have to do on the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Marie Lawrence. With hospice. Is Maria in the house?
No, she's early.
He said, that's awesome.
Let's pick your ten twenties.
We could do our ten.
We are. We could go ahead. Let's let's bring the big show up right now. Uh. Mr. Nepper, Mr. Nepper, please, please come forward and uh tell us what you got going on, sir.
Something going on.
Yes, you do.
Thank you. For your support and your service. I think service is great for my students to be here. Because I want them to serve in their communities, wherever they choose to live, whatever paradigm they choose to flourish into their community. Or whatever passions they choose to move forward in careers, so there's nothing more beautiful for than service. And I will hope that these kids actually see what you're doing. This is an educational experience. And thank you very much for your time that you give to our great community. We won. I am an advocate for the arts, but also music in the schools. Uh I have served uh as a educator in Berkeley County for twenty-seven or twenty-eight years. I don't remember. Uh I I chose the correct career and uh for the I realized that to um. Make people feel accomplished and leave any stage feeling accomplished, whatever they're performing, is the greatest feeling when you lift people up. So to all of the students that were on the band field or whether on stage, the hours that they put in to perfect their um their ensemble. Uh that they these students accomplished something that was very meaningful and relevant, which all of my students have tried to pursue. We are the first uh West Virginia band to win an Atlantic Coast Championship. Which is a compilation of many states in this mid-Atlantic region. And we've been pursuing that since I've been band director for a very long time. And I had a feeling that the every group that I've had has been very special, but this one was very unique. And I felt like that they were going to um make this happen. And they uh persevered on the field on a very um post hurricane windy day, and I can see the determination dedication on their faces. The leadership among the senior class is one that will leave a legacy, and I think that they will um. They will be remembered for what they have done to help lift their peers, and that's the assembly line that I've tried to create. I am not the best player, um uh but I think that I have learned how to facilitate by being and surrounding myself by good people. I learned I had great had had great mentors that helped me um nurture this this um program. And I have great administrators and Berkeley County schools to help support music in our schools. I cannot be any grateful. I like to bring up my drum majors here, and I could ramble on because um. Because there's just so much um admiration for what these students do. So anyway, if you could, Lucy Green and Jonah Smith, if you can come up uh and be by my side. I don't know how this works on the proclamation. I've served on the Governor of um Commission of the Arts and uh. With Jim Justice, and I have watched a lot of great things happen with uh throughout the arts in our state, and I hope that I could. That these young people will do the same upon service to not only for the causes, the good causes they do for people, but for the fine arts. In Berkeley County schools or whatever community they they live in. So congratulations and thank you for this proclamation and giving you your time to recognize these amazing students.
Well, you know, those of us who live in South Berkeley County consider you the pride of the South Side. That's what you are, and it's such a joy to go to any event, which I know we've got one coming up, I think Saturday. Uh your uh Exit Five. Group will be playing at the Warm Hearts Warm Hands Event. Always look forward to that, but but you guys are amazing. You're absolutely amazing. And to hear, like, my brother lived really close to the school, so I hear you out there in the middle of summer when it's ninety-five degrees or hotter practicing. And you wear the grass down to dirt, you know, just it's just like like the football team does. They they wear their. Practice field to dirt, but you guys do the exact same thing. You work so hard to accomplish the things that you go after. And it's, you know, so many, I hope you understand and appreciate the leadership that you have here. This guy's special. And I think most of you know that. His heart and soul is given to you throughout the entire year. And your parents, your grandparents, your friends and neighbors, your community that supports you. It takes everything to make all these great things happen, but your dedication and your skills that you've developed. Uh have taken you to a number one position in this in this region. So we congratulate you and we're proud of you, and you know, this whole this whole county. Has such wonderful children in it that are growing to be wonderful adults and have such talents. You know, whether whether you're on the the. At the halftime or the pre-show or whatever whatever event you're doing to the to the football games, to the volleyball games. You know, across this whole county and and really and truly the entire Panhandle, there's just tremendous young people, and our future is bright. You know, you don't realize the opportunities that you have. Not everybody has them. They don't, and other parts of our state, you know, they struggle. But you guys have such opportunities up here, and I hope that that the groundwork has been laid and that you have the desire to learn and grow. And do wonderful things. We've we've got this young lady sitting up here this morning. She's she has a wonderful future as well as you all do. So congratulate you uh on all of your accomplishments and just so that you know that we're proud of you and thank you for what you do. So, yes, sir.
I wanted to, thank you for, thank you for those beautiful words. I wanted to mention as well, I didn't get an opportunity. That but I wanted to have the students that were on the two thousand twenty-four State Honor Jazz Band. Uh we included something very small on that. I didn't get a chance to tell the commission of their accomplishments of. If anyone was in the two thousand twenty-four West Virginia State Honor Jazz Band, can you please stand? You guys remember we went there. Once we get one, we're always working on something and and these kids are doing an amazing job in presentation and playing, so I wanted to make sure that. I wanted you to know that there was a state honor and uh we didn't get a chance to let you know. But thank you very much for allowing the time and placing this on your agenda. Thank you for your service and thank you, kids, for an amazing and memorable season. Uh I it was it's been fun watching you grow and I can't wait to see where you go into the world. The world is an exciting place. And I hope that this program gave you some of the mechanisms to enjoy all the gifts this beautiful world and this community uh. Does for so many people. Just thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Mr. Nepper, we we're gonna read your proclamation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let me ask you a question first. So uh winning this thing, do you advance to another level now, like a national thing or?
Uh uh we, there is a national competition and it can be very, very expensive, so we only do it every four years.
Okay.
There after this one, there isn't, there isn't one of the nationals that they have. Um where you register for it and there is a trail to get to it, but it takes some time. It's in Indianapolis and New York City. And we we take to be smart because we want to have so many opportunities for kids. What we do is we raise the money for four every four years and and show up there. It's a fun trip, really is, very educational. Yeah, we went last year, yeah.
You did.
Had a great time.
Good. Alright, here's the proclamation for the Musman High School Marching Band. Whereas the Musman High School Marching Band is an Appleman institution having first stepped off in the first year of the school seventy-five years ago. And whereas the marching Appleman have drilled on ever since to establish a longstanding tradition of excellence, earning more than a dozen regional championships in tournaments of bands. Competition since two thousand and placing second at the West Virginia Governors Cup in twenty twenty-four. Whereas November one, twenty twenty-five, the marching Appleman became the first West Virginia high school marching band to win at the Atlantic Coast Championship. In the year fifty-plus year history of the Mid-Atlantic Regional Competition. Whereas the marching band demonstrated an exceptional musicality, discipline, and school spirit built upon past achievements. Of Musman High School's music programs, including the Atlantic Coast Championship, won in twenty twenty-four by the Musman Jazz Band. And two decades of superior rating by the Musman Concert Band. And whereas the milestone making cos- accomplishments to Musman High School music programs are a point of pride for all of Berkeley County. And are deserving of high praise and recognition. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission recognizes the hard work and dedication of the members of the Musman High School Marching Band. And Director Michael Nepper, and congratulations to everyone in helping bring yet another championship back to Berkeley County. Congratulations. Do you mind me the motion to approve the uh proclamation?
My pleasure to make that motion.
No, second.
The motion is second.
And I'm from Hedgesville, we're still proud of you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I was having. Thank you. Okay, we'll go take a little break, get a few pictures perhaps, and uh yes, go back to school and have fun.
Time to read your instrument.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up was Maria Lawrence with the Development Director of Hospice of the Panhandle. Good morning.
Good morning.
Come forward, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate not the two hundred and fifty percent of the Muslim and banned, but but I think our message is as important. As I think all of you know, November is National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, and so what we've done typically is try and and appear before each of the councils, commissions in the regions in which we serve. And so if you follow us on Facebook, Jim Klein went to the Lord County Commission yesterday, and they did a similar resolution for us. But you know, the work we do, and I know I'm sort of preaching to the choir here, but the work we do at hospice is really life-changing. And those of you who have experienced it with your loved ones can understand, I think, and appreciate just how important the role of hospice is in the community. Secondly, I think you all are aware that four years ago, we began a whole other program of palliative care. And we call that Panhandle Palliative Services, which is not hospice, but really designed to help care for patients and really give their caregivers a hand in earlier stages of a disease process. So right now, we have three hundred and fifty-seven people just in two counties in our palliative care program. And they are cared for and visited by nurse practitioners, a nurse, a social worker about once a month. But it can be more if they need it. And in our hospice program, as of this morning, we had two hundred and twenty-three patients again across the four county region. And I'm happy, but also sad to tell you that for probably the fifth time in my seventeen years at hospice of the Panhandle, our inpatient facility was full this morning. Fourteen beds, you know, designed really for people who are either at the very end of their lives or just need some really special assistance in getting their pain and symptoms under control. The the theme this year of National Hospice and Palliative Care Month is We See the Whole You. And if any of you read the journal, we had an article that appeared yesterday by our CEO, Nikki Biderelli. And I think what what is really is really emphasized in We See the Whole You is many, many times when patients are going through a diagnosis and a very serious illness, and they see their physician and they, you know, the physician says, we're going to do this, 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 and this. And it's really about treating the illness, which is what what we want our physicians, our medical community to be doing, right? But when it comes to hospice, when you've made that decision, when a family has made the decision to forego all of the aggressive stuff, going to the doctor all the time, having chemotherapy and radiation and dialysis and all those things that are really meant to prolong life, and you've made the decision that you want to be comfortable and focus on the things that are really important. I think the fact that it's hospice, seeing the whole you. So we're just not seeing the disease that you have, but we're seeing what's important to you. What are your goals? Do you have a family member that you haven't spoken to in twenty years? We can make those help make those connections for you and with you. And
Fly an airplane around Berkeley County.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Or fly in an airplane around Berkeley County. I mean, you know, we try to make those wishes and dreams come through. I think what Steve is referring to is, you know, we made, we made that work for Speedy Lloyd. I mean, that's one of the things that he wanted to do at the end was was get in that plane. And we said, okay, we can make that happen. Actually, our social workers really make that happen like you wouldn't believe. But, you know, it's been such an amazing journey for me personally. As we made the reference, I'll be retiring next month. And I still have plenty of things to do, right, John Hardy?
Yes. Plenty of boards and plenty of
That's exactly right. But it has been an incredible blessing to me personally. The stories that I've been able to tell, the people that I have been able to reach, the folks that have donated this community, all four counties are so incredibly generous. Now you do have to ask, which I'm not too fearful about asking, right, Jim Whitaker? So, but it has been, it has been incredible. And I will not be a stranger to hospice. I'm going to probably wait for a while before I become a volunteer, but that will not be too far from the too far in my future. So thank you for always being supportive in so many different ways. And and again, thank you for recognizing Hospice and Palliative Care Month.
Very good. Thank you, Maria, for coming in. And it's it's our privilege to welcome you and your organization here, but always you, for sure. And wish you the very best in your retirement.
Thank you.
And I know that as soon as you announced it, everybody started like, okay, I need Maria on this.
Yeah, I have had a couple of people reach out and say, oh, do you want to serve on this? Let's wait for a little bit. Thank you.
We still have her at the airport.
Yeah, that's exactly.
So if you would like, I would be happy to read the
Absolutely. And then if we can take a photo, that'd be great. Thank you.
National Hospice Month proclamation, whereas for more than forty years, Hospice of the Panhandle has provided comfort and dignity to thousands of people, allowing them to spend their final months at home, surrounded by their loved ones. Whereas the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality, symptom control, and including expert medical care, quality symptoms control, and comprehensive pain management on a foundation of care. Whereas beyond providing physical treatment, Hospice of the Panhandle attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs and provides family services such as respect care and bereavement counseling. Whereas since the inception, hospice's benefit holistic approach has been to help patients prepare for the face of death and their loved ones, uh, unsupported in the wake of it. Whereas palliative care improves quality of life and offers relief from pain can be provided at any time during the illness, and hospice are some of the best providers of community-based palliative care. Whereas in increasingly fragmented and broken healthcare system, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how healthcare can and should work as best for its patients. Whereas 1.72 million Medicare beneficiaries living in limited, life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and community throughout the United States in 2020. Whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that helps individuals make decisions about the care they want. Whereas the central philosophy of hospice puts patients first, hospice care puts patients first, ensuring a coordinated and person-centered approach to care, protecting patients' choice and access to individualized services based on the patient's unique care needs and wishes. Whereas given our universal mortality, hospice is a valuable benefit for all Americans and their loved ones. Now therefore be resolved that the Berkeley County Commission does hereby proclaim November 2025 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of all care at home services, including family caregivers, palliative care, hospice care, home health, and private duty home care, and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think most of you, um, know my successor who did, um, who, who came to orientation for two days, and then she has an event at Faith Christian Academy at the end of the week, Jennifer Stanley, um, will be my replacement. She starts full-time on Monday, and we have, um, about three weeks, uh, of coaching and, uh, working side-by-side together, and I know Jennifer will do a fantastic job. She, um, she's what we call-
She's a very good lady.
We have, she has a heart for hospice, which is what we always look for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for everything.
Can we take a picture?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll just go take a quick break. Be right back. Yeah, we're back in service. Um, the motion to adopt the hospice proclamation-
So moved.
Second.
It moved in a second. Any further discussion? All fair and say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you. Uh, let's see here. Next up, Mr. Wine.
Thank you, sir. Let me see. I'm sorry. My first one is the nine-one-one fees, correct?
Yes, sir.
This should be no surprise to the commission, uh, that someone standing in front of you talking about Berkeley County Public Safety Fund being taxed, if you will, stressed. Um, in this instance, we're, I would like to discuss your, your current position with your current fee structure for the number one, what, what is referred to as wireline charges, landlines. We're not discussing wireless fees, those, that rate is set by the state, collected by the state, and distributed by the state. Um, but more importantly, uh, the only opportunity for this body to consider for purposes of increasing in that fee are wireline fees. You, you have discussed this over and over again. You've considered opportunities to move those fees from the actual telephone lines to the power meters to, you've kicked it around and around so many times. But the moral to the story is, as we sat here today, and Director Swisher's in the audience, um, we're struggling keeping your head above water, uh, supporting the efforts at the center. What you've done most recently, uh, in 2017, you, you did increase the fee to five dollars. But as time has moved on from there, instead of going back to the well and considering a fee increase, you have applied non-nine-one-one, non-nine-one-one monies and used regular general county tax dollars to support the efforts down there. So currently, just, just as a, a brief overview, your nine-one-one fee generate, generated last year, three million, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That's nine-one-one fee monies. Two million, four hundred sixty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars, or seventy-one percent of that was from cell phones. One million, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars, or thirty percent of that was what's referred to as wireline. That can be a copper line, that can be a VoIP line from Comcast or an internet provider. Those are what are referred to as wireline. And then your six hundred thousand dollars that, of your tax dollars that you've diverted from general county monies to help stand up nine-one-one. So their total budget is four million, ninety-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars. You have survived, uh, because of, and with no fault of Jennifer or Chad, you've survived because you maintain about six vacancies. Uh, it, it's hard to keep the roster full. Uh, so those vacancies are right around four hundred and three thousand dollars, five hundred, four hundred and three thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Um, if you were to be fully staffed, you could not support payroll and the expenses of running that pretty expensive outfit down there. So, what I did was, I looked at what your 2017 approved fee structure was, and remember, this only applies to wirelines. Uh, and, and I just use a model that's from another county in the state. I just ran the numbers. So, this is for discussion. I'm not asking for approval. We're just discussing and asking for direction of, one, does the commission have an appetite to look at numbers, get some direction from you, and come back to you with what a newly proposed ordinance would look like? And of course, there's a whole public hearing process, if you so choose. So right now, your current structure is five dollars for what's called residential. And then your ordinance refers to Centrex lines. Well, thirty years ago, if you had multiple lines in your business, they were Centrex lines. That's evolved, and that technology is, has been eliminated. So now, what I would offer to the commission is that you consider a residential and a commercial fee. It doesn't really how the commercial company gets their lines, be it VoIP lines, not Centrex, whatever it would be. So you'd have a, a commercial structure and a residential structure. So, if the commission chose to look at modifying your residential rating going from five dollars to seven dollars and ninety-five cents, that's a thirty-seven percent increase. And I should also say with what I'm gonna tell you, that there is no way for me to be able to speak specifically to what a commercial and a residential would look like. I just assumed, guessed, if you will, twenty percent of your wireline fee is commercial, the other eighty percent is residential. Nobody ha, nobody, they're not paid that way. There's no way for me to tell you that. So, until year one is done, there'd be no way for me to say, hey, here's what this looks like. So I'm assuming eighty, twenty could be, could be ninety, ten. I, I don't know. So, if you chose to increase it from five to seven ninety-five, and eighty percent of those affected were residential, that would generate three hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. If you would also consider taking what is currently five dollars for your commercial lines, one through eight, they're called Centrex, and then nine and on are sixty-two and a half cents extra. I'm giving you a scenario that would change from five dollars to twelve seventy-five. That's a sixty-one percent increase for lines one through eight, and then nine on would be two dollars and twenty-five cents, which is a seventy-two percent increase for those above eight. That could potentially, if twenty percent of the current amount are commercial, that would generate a hundred and twenty-six thousand, fifty-five dollars. So all in with these numbers is four hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. I just told you that you have four hundred and three thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars worth of vacancies. So, it only pads you by about fifteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand, twenty thousand. So, I, I just offer those numbers, and I'm open to discuss and, and tell you anything you wanna hear. Um, but I can tell you that we're, your nine-one-one funding model is, is, is stressed beyond stressed. Uh, and it survives only because you can't keep the seats full. And I've been here twenty years, and I don't know that I've ever seen the seats full. Be wonder if they were. Um, you had, you had thirty-two FTEs in 2017, you have forty-three FTEs today. Remember, you had firefighters, you had call volume, you had law enforcement officers.
The population.
The population. So, that is the natural growth of just trying to keep pace. And Jen can stand in front of the mic and tell you that they don't twiddle their thumbs on any given shift. But, um, all that to say is, you have a problem. We've talked about it multiple times. We, we, when we've casually discussed, not at the bench, but when I've casually talked to you, there've been other priorities in play. You know, last year, the commercial fire fee was coming into play. The year before that, the ambulance authority was starting to tax the commercial environment. So, it, it, you could look at me and say, well, why did it take you so long? Well, at the same time, the people who pay, the eighty percent, if my estimate's accurate, that pay this, our grandma and grandpa were homeowners, right? This is just another fee laid on top of the backs of the citizenry of the county. It's nothing to joke about, and I know all five of you take it personally. So, it's been a minute to start this conversation, but I believe we shouldn't, my recommendation is we shouldn't overlook it, and something needs to be done. Um, you could kick the can and wait the budget season and look at allocating more general county tax dollars to it. Uh, but no matter how you slice it, we're at a problem. So we either need to pause the six vacancies and tell Director Swisher she can't have them now, uh, which in her line of work, scare that, the, out of her, because it isn't, it isn't abnormal. You see these every week, that you have a resignation, or you have someone left because they don't like that kind of work. So she always has rolling vacancies. If she doesn't have the opportunity to present, at least for the application pool, a larger number, 'cause she could start twenty and get three. So if we take six from her, and if she has one, she advertises for one, it's a dangerous proposition for that line of work. So, answer any questions?
Well, I mean, just, you know, we, we've been having this discussion one and all for quite a while, and the current model is not sustainable. It is not. And, and the reason is, number one, the, the nine-one-one fees that were collected have been pilfered.
The wireless.
Yes, sir.
Yes, they have.
Well, you only, and you only collect on West Virginia state numbers.
So if you, you collect on the billing address. So if they have a two-four-zero area code and it's billed to your residence, it's-
Okay, so that's been cleaned up.
Yeah.
But it's like, the state, the state has gotten into some of these-
Yeah, so on the wireless fees that were designed-
Along with the Siren network, which is a, a good network.
The state police gets a piece, the statewide radio network gets a piece. Jen, anyone else? The tower assistance fund, they peel off to other counties, build towers.
Yeah. So once again, you know, we've asked, we've, we've asked on multiple occasions, our legislative bodies to try and attach these to meter sockets. Instead, because so many people are now doing away with their landlines in their homes. So there goes that revenue. It's a, it's a declining revenue source as our ink, as our expenses continue to increase. Uh, once again, the one percent sales tax that we've asked for, that we say will help fund our nine-one-one centers, and we've been constantly denied that opportunity to go to our voters and ask them for that one percent sales tax. So, those are the problems that we incur, and then on the backside, our only choices are to increase fees. And that's not, that's not fair, especially to our senior population. And that's, that's where we all struggle with this. I know we've, we've had these conversations. So, I, I, I just know that, that if we don't do something very soon, that you'll continue to have to find general revenue dollars to support the nine-one-one center, which should be able to stand on its own if we have the ability to, to do the things we need to do. That's where I'm at, and I'm certainly open to other conversations and thought processes.
Here, is there a way to break out the expenditures for nine-one-one versus, uh, operations versus capital? I mean, so what, what goes towards capital, what goes towards operations?
Every penny of it.
Or is this all operational money that we're talking about? Because what I'm getting to is, can any impact fee money be used towards nine-one-one?
If it were growth-oriented, right? So, these, these numbers, you, what your current operating costs are minus a, a large lease agreement that supports their computer-aided dispatch software and their telephone systems. They don't have any capital outlay.
Right.
They, they live within their own means.
So mostly operate, their budget is mostly all operational.
Ninety-five percent of their budget is operational. Yeah. Their capital planning, uh, with their building, so history. When the county commission started this process, there's, you have a bond that, that you, that you've paid that service on, that, that will expire in the not so, not so far away. The intent was, is that the nine-one-one fee would pay the county commission a lease payment on the building, that you in turn would use that monies to service the debt. You haven't done it for two years straight. This is the third year. There isn't any way in the world that you could do that. So on top of your six hundred thousand dollars that you're allocating into their operating, that capital outlay that you're talking about, that there was a structure to do that, it can't support that.
Right. So it's six hundred thousand plus.
Correct.
Outlet.
That is correct.
That was three hundred thousand.
Yeah, but I think the all-in debt service on that note was like two-seventy, or, but it can't pay it. It hasn't been able to pay it. And when we discussed that, again, EMS was there, fire was there. Fire went to the people and got approved, and you know what that looked like. So, this got put on the back burner and said, okay, well, we'll just service that, we'll just service that. Well, when, when you redistribute monies, tax monies from general county, like you have done, that's taking away from other resources. You have the sheriff saying they need stuff, or whatever it is, you, you've put it there. It's all the duties of this body, right? You have to provide that service. So, and it's not an expensive service. It's just like every other on the public safety. It's, they're not cheap folks. Their work is expensive to do. Uh, and it takes some expensive equipment to make it happen in space, so, um-
Well, and we have to make sure that we're propping up that organization. I mean, because all the other organizations-
Depending on their organization.
I mean, our fire, police, EMS, or all dispatches do our nine-one-one. And so we have to make sure that we're, you know, that they are, uh, have as much manpower as they can certainly, uh, sustain, or they can take in. And we have to make sure that we are fully funding that best we can.
School safety program is, is dependent on nine-one-one to make that reality and help, you know, so-
When was the last time this rate was?
May of 2017.
Twenty seventeen.
And, and you know- And, and you know yourself that you've seen probably about thirty percent pay increases in staffing since then. You've seen, uh, nine FTEs inclusive and you've not raised the fee.
And we don't need legislative oversight to raise this, but we do, we would have a public hearing.
You have to have a public hearing. You do not.
So whatever we decide that we think that we need to do to sustain our nine-one-one system.
That's correct.
Uh, and make it financially viable, we would come up with that number and we would have a public hearing and we can certainly show this to our constituents that we have not raised it, this has not been raised since twenty seventeen. And this is a, a viable part of our, uh, emergency services and, and cer- certainly explain what we, what we're doing and why we're doing it.
I'd like to be able to personally to understand the, uh, wireless, the state thing through the Public Service Commission, I assume, as you said. And is it the same statewide? I would assume that it is.
No.
No.
Yeah.
And how do you go about getting that increase for critical areas like ours, if it's possible?
The model for disbursement, I can get it to you. Uh, it's based on population, but it, it's the modifier, it's, it's black and white. It's black and white. I can get it.
So there is a modifier?
There is.
To me, if you, if you're sticking on wireless, most of the peop- young people that are on wireless don't even care about.
But this is, but we can really control what we can control.
Yeah, you have no, you have no say in it. So, you know, you're generating two point four million in wireless. You know, one and a half times what you.
But this body has no control over.
That's right. Good, Jen.
So every two years that is revisited, so this year, twenty twenty-five, it was visited.
It's revisited by the PSC?
Yes.
Okay.
So the next time it will be revisited is in twenty twenty-seven. What helps is when we raise our, our amounts for wired and they will then, there's some factor that they look at and that will increase the wireless amount.
It would automatically?
It, it would after they convene and look at the rates.
So basically, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but basically what they're asking us to do is to increase those rate figures on our senior citizens, because most of them are the ones that have the hard lines, the, the rigor telephone in our homes, not the young, not the younger folks. But, but their thought process is if you raise it.
Backwards.
It's, it, yes, it is backwards, Mr. Cal.
Do they also, do they also factor in local skin in the game? Because obviously we're putting in about nine hundred, I mean, you said two-seventy and six hundred, we're almost nine hundred thousand dollars that we are spending of local tax dollars. Is there any kind of figuring? See, and that's, and that's another thing that the, like, they never look at the local skin in the game of what the local tax, what the local taxing body is doing, putting in versus, so you may have a county who's putting nothing of their own money in and they're living and dying off of the, the fee.
Yeah, Jen, I think there, this off the top, it's like thirty-five cents on a dollar, I think it's welcome.
Because it's divvied out, because everybody, it, and that's what happens, everybody, everybody's hands get in the pot.
That's right.
We need it for hours, we need, well, your nine-one-one's no good, if the towers aren't good, and if the towers aren't good, then I'm not sure who else you say.
Who does that, Mr. Hardy? It's legislature.
I know. Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm on this team now.
But can the legislator, legislators influence the PSC?
And I, I think that fight's been.
Well, the legislature makes the decision, Mr. Cal. The, the, the way it's done by legislature.
Yeah, yeah.
The PSC merely takes what they say and does the collection.
And that's all made in rulemaking and that stuff all, and that comes in like in a rules bundle. And typically what happens is the PSC will go in and make those changes and then it'll go through like a rulemaking thing, but, uh.
So there has been in the past, since March, five other counties which have increased their wired.
Which are those counties?
Oh, gosh.
I'm sorry.
Raleigh County, just theirs will go into effect in March.
Harrison.
Wood.
Trying to think which ones it was.
You'd be surprised.
Yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't, I know there was five, I'm sorry. But I can get that information too, but those, none of those fees were looked at in before March when this change was made for this coming year. So everyone then moved theirs up. It did not help to get from the wireless.
Right. So what, what you do, let's just hypothetically say you want to triple the current fee because you want to net that much money. What you, what you'll do is people will just say, forget about it, I don't want that crazy line anymore. They'll, they'll turn it off. They'll get a cell phone and then of the hundred percent that you keep on a landline, you're going to get the fraction of the wireless fee you got. So it, there's no win to it. It, nothing, it doesn't stay local.
Tread lightly.
Yes, correct, correct. So I will offer to you, my numbers that I used here would mirror you to the highest in the state. I would offer that to you, that the seven seventy, the seven ninety-five and the twelve seventy-five, you would, you would be one of the highest, you would match the highest.
Is that can all?
Yeah. So I, I don't want to see you be the leaders in the state with regard to fees, but at the same time, tread lightly, because if you, you go to a twenty-dollar fee, people will cancel. And then instead of keeping twenty dollars, you're going to keep a percentage of what the wireless is, six dollars, where it may be. You're only going, you don't get a hundred percent of the win. So I, I just, you know, what I need from the commission, if, if you have appetite, you know, it, tweaking the ordinance is literally the numbers, uh, and a public hearing if the commission so chooses and wants to move forward.
Could we get a spreadsheet of the last two years financial, just the overview financial?
In a second.
Just an, I don't need just an overview of the financials for the past two years of nine-one-one. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay, uh, next up is your declaration surplus property.
Yes, sir. The, the assessor has two vehicles that he has replaced and has given these to you for purposes of declaring surplus and auctioning. They're at the garage, they have been looked over by the garage, they have absolutely no use or purpose in the organization. One is a two thousand and five Dodge Durango that's, some would call it rust bucket. And the other is a twenty-fourteen Jeep Liberty that needs a transmission and other work. So they have no value and we're asking to be declared surplus and we'll put them on good deals and get the most money we can.
Need a motion to approve the declaration surplus for the two vehicles as described.
Same move, Mr. President.
Second. It's been motion and second. Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ahs have, thank you. Uh, next up is our, we do have, we do have need for executive session today, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any items from the public? I can show there's nobody from the public.
We do have a need for executive session for legal and economic development. Need a motion to go into executive session.
Same move, Mr. President.
We are in executive session.
I mean when you're ready.
Action and management.
We got, we got.
Okay, we're out of the executive session. We do have some action to take here, a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice President. I would like to make a motion that Berkeley County Commission enter into a settlement agreement with Burton L. Johannes in the amount of $168,622.24.
All right, do that motion, we have a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
And then I'd also like to make a motion that Berkeley County Commission enter into a settlement agreement with Dorothy Alagre- Alagrazia, Dorothy Alagrazia, in the amount of $25,774.37.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Since there's no one here, no further business, and no one here from the public, do I have a motion to recess?
Mr. Vice President, I move that we recess.
We are in recess.